Call the roll.
Again.
Here.
Science.
Here.
Foreman.
Here.
Phil Piper. Williamson.
Here.
Ray.
Here. Okay, number two, approval of agenda.
Changes, your honor.
Uh, no changes this evening. To approve, I guess, call the roll.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Foreman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
May.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes. Okay, number three, presentation petitions and other communications. A swearing in of police officer Chase Smith.
Yeah, when I raise you right hand, repeat after me. I am your name. I, Chase Smith, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
Constitution of the state of Iowa.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
In the city of Boone, Iowa.
City of Boone, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Think now you're gonna have your wife says too bad, all right? Oh, God, help. There we go. Awesome. Okay, one picture on there. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Chase Smith. Uh, he's a longtime Boone resident. I think life like side move resident, yeah. Last hiring process, uh, he rose to top very quickly and we're happy to have him on board. He's gonna start tomorrow. Uh, control and on in training, got ways to go for control. Um, and we'll go to the Iowa Long Person Academy. For sixteen weeks, so excited to have him and ready to fast forward and have him on the road.
Again.
Congratulations.
Hey, next up, set a hearing for November twenty second, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. For the consideration of the sale of public right of way in eleven hundred block of Marion. Street blocks three and four, a green castle addition southwest, southeast. Second, call the roll.
Science.
Yes.
Foreman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes. Okay, see, set a public hearing for November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. For the consideration of the sale of public right of way in the six hundred block of Webster and twelve hundred block of West Sixth Street, block forty, original Boonsboro Northwest, northwest. Move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Foreman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes. Okay, D Ames Economic Development Commission, uh, quarterly report.
Evening, Mayor Slade, members of Boone City Council. Now, Brenda and I were kind of excited. We saw this big crowd.
Yeah.
They were here to see us tonight. Uh, we knew better. And again, it's, I've been in one of those. That's, that's awesome ceremony. It's really, really cool how you guys handle that. Congratulations on a new one.
Thank you.
You know, as I was thinking about this report today, I thought you, you've been to most of the things that are, we're gonna talk about briefly, you know, the, uh, the Pioneer Property Management Project that broke ground here, what, six weeks ago with Director Durham was in town for that was great. It's, it's well underway, I see, by all the dirt that's moving out there. That's really good. At the same time, uh, uh, the egg certain event was just a couple of weeks later. Uh, Director Durham was back for that along with Secretary Nag. And I can't underscore enough how important it is, uh, the relationship that you've established with egg certain and Dan O, the owner, the primary owner of egg certain. Uh, the fact that he secured the vast majority of the certified site is a really good thing. Jim and I were talking here before the meeting started about how opportunity is when you put those things in motion long, long before you need them. Also, when you need them, you've got it. And it's a great opportunity for egg certainly grow and expand here in the Boone community. And believe me, uh, egg certain will grow and expand here. Uh, Dan O tends to deliver what he promises and then some. And so we're excited for him, certainly for you and for the community of Boone, because a lot of good things will come from that eggs expansion. So. As you know, Brenda usually does most of the talking of these things, so I'll stop. If you got any questions, I'll be here too, and I'll turn it up, but I'll turn it over to Brenda now. Thank you.
So, uh, I decided to highlight some of the workforce things, uh, in the report. Um, continues, um, I would note the unemployment, uh, rate, uh, dropped pretty significantly over last year and. A bigger drop that we saw in a lot of counties across Iowa. And that means the jobs are being created here. And so. I continue to see a lot of use on the job board. Uh, we had a, a fun event out at the Arbery. Uh, that's really a neat addition. For us is to be able to firsthand the opportunity of the tour. Uh, in that environment. So we had a great engagement activity with our employers, uh, and the folks, uh, up there at the National Guard. Then we're gonna be doing a job fair out there actually as well. So. Uh, we're grateful for that. I'm excited about the things going on from a workforce perspective. I'm gonna pivot and talk about something completely different now. Um, I've got an handout that I'll hand out to the council. Terry already, Terry and I contributed, um, for the meeting, but. Uh, so, uh, county is part of the Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund. Uh, that's a different trust fund than we have in Story County, uh, but they're administered by the same organization. So, uh, we have good contacts and good understanding of their program. Bill and I talked last week about their current funding round. So they, uh, sent out a notice. About four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars that's available for the folks that are part of that, uh, trust fund. Uh, the community of Boone, the community of Ogden are members of Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund. Um, and so you're eligible to make an application. For initiatives that support owner occupied projects, people that own their home. Uh, earlier this spring, we worked with the city of Ogden. On something we call the major improvement grant. And in your handout, I, I highlighted kind of the things of that program. Uh, it has up to about, uh, ten thousand dollars. Uh, for households that qualify. And those that qualify would need to meet the income requirements on the back page by household size. Um, they're really looking not to change your sighting from one color to another, but really on how to improve the safety stability of a home that somebody's in. What we know is that the home that people are in is sometimes the most affordable option for them. Um, so this program allows, um, people to apply, uh, for things that'll make their home safe. Or stable, if they're qualified on an income standpoint. What I would propose for, for Boone would be, just like we did in Ogden, we do a one time a year application period. They have basically nine months to complete the work. Uh, we conducted an information session in Ogden where a lot of people came and got questions answered. Maybe we do one during the day and one at night. Maybe we do more than one here. But then it would be probably what I would propose is your economic development committee would actually meet, uh, score those, review all the applications and make the award. Um, as I looked at numbers and, and knowing how big the Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund is, is that, uh, I would propose a grant request of eighty thousand. Uh, we have to have at least twenty-three point three four percent in local match. So I would, uh, encourage you to bump that a little bit up to twenty thousand. And if there's any set aside dollars that maybe used tip in, in like a, a housing subdivision that didn't meet the income requirements, I wasn't sure. But that's how sometimes communities come up with the local match. Um, and that we'd make an application before January. And, uh, we've been administering the Ogden program. It's, uh, worked out well. Um, I would, and then there's enough banks that are involved in both communities. So I'd say not confuse matters. We know it works. That we would essentially apply for, um. Boone to do a sentiment get over in Ogden with a request of eighty thousand matched with twenty thousand. I talked to Phil a little bit ahead of time, even if you wanted to do half of your match in the current fiscal year. And the other half in July, it's kind of split your fiscal years. Um, we should be able to stay here the applications in terms of having people, uh, submit a timeline. Uh, in terms of when they would do the work so that we could, uh, balance out that local match. So, uh, essentially, uh, it's a pretty good return in terms of. What your local dollars will, and it's a pretty, uh, I would suspect will end up, um, it's not everybody will get ten thousand or need ten thousand. So I think we'll probably get closer to fifteen houses include, uh, should you decide you want to apply. Um, and, and if you're awarded by Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund, I feel like it could be a good way to, to fix up some of your homes. I know you probably say, well, it's only ten or fifteen. Well. Start to ten or fifteen. If it's successful, you can ask for funding again next year. So. Uh, we have a little bit of time. I'm just here to present it and see if that might be something the council's interested in, and we're here to help.
Awesome. Yeah, this is a really good program. Brendan and I had a discussion prior to this meeting. Um, it's a good way for us to help local residents improve their housing. Groves, windows, sidewalks, ramps, whatever the case may be, to stabilize their house.
And like she said, and with, uh, relinquish, they're pretty generous with their income. Requirements. So, uh, I think we could help a lot of people here in, in the city, so. I think it's a great program.
Sounds good. And, and Boone benefits also.
Yep.
People are fixing up their homes. And, and you said it needs to be completed within nine months. Is that a pretty short timeline?
Yes, objects. And the thing is about it, so the Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund likes projects done in a year. But by the time you get your funding, you have your application cycle, you have your information meetings, you score the applications, what you find out is it's really about nine months that they need to get their work done. And, um, they have to have estimates and they have to have pictures. All that's part of the application process. And so, um. Again, we know the application. I would say that we would utilize the same application, change out the logos. They have to provide proof of, of, of income as part of the application and, uh. They could put some of their own money towards it, uh, and actively require that. Um, but it was kind of a mixed bag of what people were willing to do. But. And that's part of it. They'd have to get it done so they can't drag it out.
Right. That's a good part. I mean, that, that.
Process is, is that, um. The. Entity, the, the trust fund pays the contractor directly.
Yeah, we, the, the checks never go directly to the homeowner. They have to sign off on the work. But you have to have an invoice from a contractor that then is paid, uh, ultimately, um. The, we request the funds, the check would come to the city from Central Iowa, and then you would process, process those, Andrea, and I'd give you the documentation.
From a, from a contractor standpoint. It's a win-win. They know they're.
Know they're, yeah, they won't have to.
And they don't care if it's sixty days or ninety days. They know that money's coming. So it's. It's a no-brainer for that.
What's your approval rating? I mean, uh, in applications?
So it really, it's, it's really interesting, Linda, because we're at the, the Central Iowa Housing Trust is like seven counties. So it really is depending on what the other counties might submit. Now, there is the possibility that. The current round of funding, there'll be some of us that don't use all of our funding, and then it has to go back into the pot. So it could be more than four hundred and thirty-two thousand, it could be more. Uh, but that's the least that's available. And. You know, I, I feel like if, if Boone, uh, would, we get done what we said we were gonna get done, I think you could apply then the following year. Just kind of put your toes in the water on it. And, and again, see if we can get, uh, ten, twelve, fifteen houses. Um, and a lot of it falls on the homeowner. They have to provide the documentation. They have to get their pictures in. Um, and incomplete applications as an economic development committee. You probably would, if it's incomplete, you toss it out if there's people that didn't pay it. So, but we'll do information sessions, uh, give people a chance. Um, again, because there's some similarity in banks. I think the banks can be helpful to the folks moving through the process. So. And Jimmy, but have you been around for some of that? I mean, it's been, it's been really popular. Uh, we awarded six, uh, we're doing six homes in Ogden this year, so.
Looks good.
We need a motion to.
Yeah.
Forward with this.
Like to make a motion to move forward with this process. And, uh. Bill has already talked about finding funding for it. So I think we can pull this off.
I would second it.
I mean, it's. They can go ahead and indicate that they are supportive of it. And then when you find financing, they make the final motion to approve it and, and how we're going to fund it, but it should be on the agenda.
So what we can do though is actually.
Good point.
Application, get it ready, and then you guys could take action on the application.
Yep.
Putting the match sometime in the next room or so.
That, that'll work.
So I would amend my motion to track staff to pursue that and work with AMZ DC on that proposal.
My second.
That better?
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, but we'll be back one of the next couple of meetings with the application.
That was a motion?
Yes.
Second, call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Foreman.
Yes.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Thank you.
Okay, uh, number four, report of standing committees. A, Policy Administration, BJ.
Uh, yes, your honor, two items, uh, this evening. The first of the commission, thirty forty-six approving promotion of Waylon Andrews to Public Works Director. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I can just give a little history. As you know, the P and A committee, uh, did the interviews for that and made a recommendation, uh, at that time to recommend a full council to appoint Waylon as the Public Works Director. Hence, this is the resolution that makes that official.
Is there a starting date or?
January first, two thousand twenty-three.
Over.
Second.
Call the roll.
Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Foreman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then the second, uh, item that we have is just discussing and setting an interview, um, for an internal candidate for the building official position.
Thank you. Uh, so you know, Ed is retiring January, January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Put out the internal memo if anyone is interested in this. We got one, uh, application from David Aides, who is our community service officer and who has been working with Ed over the last several months. So what I would like to do to, tonight is with the P and A committee, do you want to follow the same thing we did with that? You'd like to, uh, be part of the interview and do that. So you have some times when we could. Do the interview this week. Um. I have something, uh, Wednesday morning till about eleven o'clock, uh, but after that I could do it or. Can, or Thursday, we have C I P meeting, so I'm not available then. Wednesday afternoon, I think I'm available.
Wednesday afternoon's good for me.
Okay.
I can do that, too.
Let me look here. Just give me a second.
Yeah, one, three, two is fine.
Two o'clock Wednesday afternoon?
Yep.
And does.
The ninth. Yes, I can do that.
Okay, so I will write that.
Again, two, two o'clock?
Yes.
Two P M, eleven, nine, twenty-two. We'll do it here in the council chambers.
On my calendar.
Yeah, my god.
Thank you.
All right, we should be all settled at, that's all I have, your honor.
All right, uh, Public Safety, Stephen.
Straight closure application for the Holiday Enlightened Parade on Thursday, December first. Chief, uh, any big change on?
No, no big changes. Um, it's gonna be on the first. Their request is to float the road from four to eight. Uh, I believe that the parade usually steps off at six thirty or seven, kind of depends on the dark, uh, how dark it is. But. Um, I kind of hope Mike would be here to talk about this. Basically, the same thing they've been doing, same, uh, Sixth and Ninth Street, so.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to approve the application.
Second, call the roll.
Bird.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Foreman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes. Hey. Uh, Utility Committee, Stephen. Uh, we'll have a meeting this Wednesday at four thirty P M. Here in the chambers. Okay, Economic Development Committee, Terry.
Yeah, I got a couple of updates here. Um. Richard Brothers and Bame Insurance BDF projects were approved and will be moving forward. Solar FX, their BDF project is complete, so they will be doing. Sometime soon here. Um, we received an additional request for a BDF project downtown, the H and R building, H and R block building downtown. Um, so we'll be working on that. Uh, update on the overpass. It's still scheduled for completion mid-December. Um. The ribbon cutting ceremony sometime in the spring. Am I correct? Is what Brenda told me.
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Unless you want to put on your parka.
I'll talk to Brenda.
Okay. Um. They're moving dirt, like they said, at twenty-second and Lynn. I, and they have made a lot of progress. That site is pretty close to being prepped and ready, I think. So. Um, Jimmy John, who utilities are complete, I talked to one of the electricians out there. Um, they're ready for that building to be set. You know, I know it doesn't look like it, but it sets on dirt. And they have pads poured for it. So they, when that building comes, they'll just shift it and set it right on there.
So it's done? I mean, it's a.
Yeah, it's, it's a modular thing. It's kind of like, uh.
Free fat.
There's was, uh, comes in in pieces. Um, so overnight it will be. So it, it could go in overnight, but it'll be probably two to three weeks after they set it. By the time they hook up all the plumbing and get to, get it powered up and run their tests. And there are some restrictions that they have to do to, to open for business. So.
And then the drive, um. I've seen where it's kind of plotted out. Will you still be able to drive through there, like to get to the string shop and that, or will you need?
Yeah.
And the fat.
Absolutely. That you, right now, you can go out there and drive to Dollar Tree and.
Right.
Shop. There's nothing restricting that. So, no, it should be all good. Um. Also met with, uh, the Arts Council and Main Street Committee this week. Um, Linda was there. I think we had a pretty productive meeting. Um. They're going to put together a plan moving forward for their, uh, reapplication process. And then, uh, hold the bus, see what, how, help with that process and stuff, um, going forward. Um, C V B Board had a board meeting this last Thursday discussing new county brochure and finalizing that information. Um, we also laid, and for, uh, two thousand twenty-three, including a kiosk project to the train site. Continuing the Knights on the Green events next summer, putting together a play and stay package for Boone County. And the area attractions and businesses. So there, she's pretty busy out there. Um, we also met, and this is on the agenda, about the pole for, uh, pole, um. Pole frame construction here in Boone, Morgan Buildings. After a lengthy discussion with staff, um, Ed, Ed was there and Dave and Jim and myself. Who else was there? I think that was it, right?
Oh, wait up.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And the, and the pole guy.
Okay.
Uh. We came to the conclusion after a lengthy discussion that. There was, there was no, no other communities in the, in the area that had restrictions on that other than HOAs. Um. From a legal a- aspect, we didn't, uh, we didn't determine whether we, that we could single out these building constructions. Not to mention the fact that we have two projects sitting on the books right now. They're half a million dollar projects. They're to be built on acreages here in town that we're missing out on income tax revenue. So. With that said, from a legal aspect, I would. Entertain lifting the moratorium on these pole buildings for now. And if we, if it becomes problematic in the future, we can always readdress it. But I would make that motion to lift that moratorium. Ending unless Ed has anything else.
I know, I know. I mean, that's, that's, we, we reached out to, uh, Ames at Des Moines again. Again, Ames has nothing. Uh, they've not, they haven't had any problem with their HOAs take care of any issues. They, you know, make them up with the newer subdivisions. Um, Des Moines has, has a historical. District area, they have several, actually they have four of them. And those are pretty restrictive of what they can and cannot do in there. And that kind of eliminates. Uh, allowing those type of buildings in there, even at the garage. Um, but other than that, those are the only two communities that wouldn't really have any response.
And Nick has assured us that he will try to guide his clients towards a. Better facade on these, so they don't look so industrial. But I'd like to make that motion that, that the moratorium.
Second, call the roll.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Foreman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bird.
No.
And I want to say thank you, everyone, for checking into that more in depth, because it did give a lot more information. And I, I know, Bill, you went out and took. You know, got a lot of information for us. So. That was.
That's all I have, your honor.
All right, thank you. Uh, number five, department reports. Building official, Ed.
The report, your honor.
Finance Officer, Andrea.
No report.
Uh, City Attorney, Jim.
Thank you. After our last meeting, uh, Central Iowa Expo Board records, I sent a written request to. Uh, our former representative, Gary Nystrom, through his attorney, Lauren A. Lean. I also sent a request to, uh. Steve Duffy as Boone County Board Supervisor. It's my opinion that once they are for, he's serving on that capacity as. A supervisor, Gary was serving on there as a councilman for a large portion of that time. And I think once those documents are provided to, to them, just like if documents would be provided to you folks, if you serve on a committee, those become public records. I also, uh, asked, uh, the Boone County Auditor to produce, uh, what documents they have. They should have the documents from the beginning. Uh, my response, uh, from, uh, the county attorney is he's looking at it and he'll. He'll get around to it basically eventually. Uh, that's not sufficient, in my opinion. But Lauren advised me that the Central Iowa Expo Board is going to meet on November eighth and that they will. Supply the documents as requested. So, once I get those, uh, I'll report back. But secondly, uh. I'm still going to pursue the records from the county. There's absolutely no label reason that those should not be produced. So. So if I have any, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, but I'll let you know what happens from here on out.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, Director of Public Works, let's go Waylon.
Thank you, your honor. Couple little things, uh, before you, later on in the resolutions, um, D number three, thirty forty-nine is, uh. Basically, a, a quick rundown of the comprehensive plan for the Americans with Disability Act title TV, which is a safe pedestrian ramps school. Or safe pedestrian ramps and, or was to schools. Every two to four years, we go through and audit this. Whenever a director of the program has changed, I've been assigned as director. I've went over it, created the newest spreadsheet and inventory. And we are going to submit that to the DOT as far as well. Uh, another project that's been on the books last couple of weeks, my guys have been down. Another project that's been on the books last couple of weeks, my guys down in the Cedar Point Golf Course area from South Marshall to South Lynn on a trunk line. We had some concern this spring with the large rainfalls and seven-inch rains. We had some backup houses in the neighborhood. I knew this trunk line ran through there and we wanted to investigate and make sure this wasn't an issue. We waited to this time of the year so we could gain access through these manholes that were in the golf course. They're actually in the fairways of the golf courts, cuts right through there. Corey Hansen with Cedar Point has been more than accommodating with me. We waited until the weather got cooler. And we had to raise the manholes about three to four feet, been buried underneath the dirt, so we raised them up. Took our big jet truck across the golf course, cleaned the sewers. And camera to televise it, everything looks good, so I'm glad on that, that everything's good in that areas. It was just full and high capacity. This sewer was put in in nineteen oh six to nineteen twenty. Has been buried ever since and never to our improvement service, so this is kind of a good project for us to get done. And on a side note, I've been told that interviews for two internal parts positions tomorrow for two internal employees that submitted applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. I didn't, we went through that pretty fast, but Waylon's been a great asset to this community and he's worked with J R, listened. I mean, he knew a lot already, but I think he's done a great job, so. I think
Trained by the best.
Well, yeah, very well deserved.
He'll do well.
Agreed.
Okay, where are we here? Bill, I'm gonna let you handle that.
Thank you, sir. The first act or item is a change order number one for the South Marshall Mill and Overlay Project. That project has been completed. You'll notice in the change order, there's a deduct for four thousand six ninety-one sixty-eight from the project. In addition, staff requested liquidated damage in this project because of how it was completed. They were late. There are some issues out there, so we requested liquidated damages, a total of nine thousand dollars. So the change order is a deduct in the price for a total of thirteen thousand six ninety-one eighty-eight. And I would like a motion to approve the change order.
So move.
I can
Call the roll.
Again?
Yes.
Fine?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
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 The second item on the South Marshall project is a notice of acceptability of the work. So this will counsel, if you pass this, then we accept the work. I will add that part of this negotiations with them as well is normally there's a year warranty on it. We requested that Minat supply us with an extra two-year warranty on the performance bond. So I think it started in early November, October, the bond, guys. So we're getting two extra years, so not only this one year where we go through one winter, we'll get two extra years. So I would ask that you make a motion to to accept the notice of acceptability for the work on the South Marshall Street Mill and Overlay.
So moved?
Call the roll.
Thanks?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yeah.
Williamson?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes. Okay, the second item I have, excuse me, is a change order for the South Main Street Water Main Replacement. You'll look at this, this is a deduct as well for two thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. A motion to approve the change order.
So moved?
Please.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes. Same project, South Main Street Water Main Replacement, notice of acceptability of the work. Engineers have approved it and say it's good. Wayland is satisfied with it. J R is satisfied with it. So I'd ask for a motion to accept the work on the South Main Street Water Main Replacement Project.
So moved?
Yeah, call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Okay, I have Public Safety, Chief Adams.
Still reporting, your honor.
Chief Leebold.
Still reporting, your honor.
City Administrator, Bill.
Thank you, sir. As you were aware, we've talked a few times in council about the Communication Director position. I will tell you that I sought out three RFPs, one from the Concept Works, one from Thielen Public Relations. And the third from L S two group. I received one response back with a phone call and then a follow-up proposal. If the the proposal was in front of you, what he's proposing is it lists in the proposal everything that they will do. I think after several conversations with them, I think they've hit on what we're looking for as a city. And it's the pro is is the six-month agreement or proposal for twenty, not to exceed twenty-six hundred dollars a month, so the total, the most it could be for the six months is fifteen thousand six hundred. I think that's a great price, considering having some conversations with Ames E D C and some others on potentially this could cost. Certainly gives us six months to see if this works contracting in out, or if council would like to see go in some other direction or cease altogether.
Can you review just briefly what we get in that six months?
Yeah.
What they would do? Maybe I'm
No, it's, let me get to it here. So they will communicate factual information about the city's activities in a proactive, timely manner. If you remember that we've contracted with our website for the that one central location for that email that goes out, that sends the city message out. So they'll work with that staff and make sure it goes out on that platform. They will proactively identify, develop, and disseminate positive stories about the city government policies, plans, projects, and efforts to ensure that citizens are fully informed and responsible, goes along with those right lines of correcting some of the misinformation out there. There'll be a, on that email platform, there'll be, I don't know if it's still named this, but they did you know, but it may be differently. News and announcements. So they will dispel and correct inaccurate or deliberately misleading information about the city's activities. At least twice a day, this person will dirt social media and see if there's anything out there that they feel needs to be corrected, that's blatantly false, misleading or mistaken. So that we that we can correct it. As well, they'll be working on a newsletter. As you know, staff puts that newsletter together now. We send it out anywhere four to six times a year, depending on what we need. This may end up being monthly. They've accounted for time in here on that proposal for this. And if you look on the content creation, it's just the next page, social media responses, video segments with proactive and positive messaging, so they've talked about doing some video as well in within that price. Periodic newsletters, news releases, occasional guest editorials, under letters. Maybe from department heads or council people. If you want to put something out, you want to write an article, we can include it in that as well. And if you look the next page on the plan execution on what it tells what they they will provide. Overall, I think it's a pretty good proposal. On the next page, how we would achieve your goals. You can look at that and see what they're spending. Example, fifteen minutes per business day to conduct twice daily social media checks for an average monthly total of four point five hours. That's that time where they look to see certainly on there that it's not true or mistaken or anything like that.
Do we have a contact number that we can call in case we see something that they miss?
Sure. Actually, that'd be better if it went through me. And then I can get that to them. If you want them, I'll certainly will. I'm trying to streamline the process for you as possible. I'm sorry.
I say, can I send that to you on your social media account?
No, no, I prefer not.
That was my question is, you will be the main source that
At least start out till we get
That it all come
Till we get it handled. And 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 so we know how it's going to work and what staff will be with them.
We can screenshot something and send it to you then.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
What start, what start date are we thinking about?
I'm hoping to get this effective December first. So my question is, this is a proposal. They stated what the price would be. If you want a contract, then we can get a contract and agreement. If you want to do that, to sign it, and then that would we bring that in a resolution. If we just accept this as it is, as a gentleman's agreement, then we don't need that. So like any input from the elected officials on that? I'm sure Jim and and so the owner of this company is Eric Wilson. I will let you know that he actually grew up here in Boone. He's, he is really interested in helping the city and I I just think that it would probably for the first six months, this would be a good company to go with. And I think that reflects on the price, quite frankly.
Eric has a good group here.
Yes.
This is a well-respected group.
Yes, it is. And he has the employees to do this, and he wants, it's not just, this is not for him. Okay, it's fifteen thousand six hundred. It could have been a lot more, and he wants to help. So do you want a contract that will approve an agreement to bring back to you at the November twenty-first? Are you comfortable with this proposal that we just move forward with it? How would you like to proceed?
Should I have a contract, just to upper basis covered, I think?
Okay. All right.
I like the, I like the six-month trial period, too.
And that it's quite, that may be why the other two didn't respond, because it's it's a short time period, you know? So we'll work on getting an agreement, put together, whether he may have one. Then he can send it, Jim can look at it, and then we can bring that along with the resolution on the twenty-first.
Okay.
Any more, if there are no more questions?
Were we gonna pay for this out of?
Oh, good question. I have money in the economic development budget, I think you can take care of it. At least for sure for the first six months to see where we're at. Give us a good idea if we want to continue. I'm comfortable that it's money that we have budgeted that we can take care of it.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Good. Yes, sir.
And number six, consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you want to if not, any motion to approve?
Will be approved.
Second, call the roll.
Red?
Yes.
Sir?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Sign?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Okay, number seven, we have nothing. Number eight, I have no comments. Number nine, council member comments.
I do. I'd like to get input from council and suggest that we set up a work session. And what I'm thinking is it would be good if we could meet with the Park Commission and the council and maybe the citizens group that has been set up, looking at the new community wellness center. And because we have kind of looked at a proposal for using some some space in McColl's Park. I think it would be good to sit down with the Park Commission and kind of discuss that, see if they have ideas, if they have questions, if they have concerns. To me, I really feel it's important to that everybody's on board, that we make sure that the information's out there, that we know we're working closely with them. Because I think we've looked at, I know this is the fourth site that I've been involved in, looking at at where this community center will go from working on on remodeling the Y to out by the childcare. What was
Family Resource Center.
Out there to the old fairway site, and now this is kind of the next location that we're looking at is is McColl's Park. And so I really think it would be good if we could set up maybe a work session and and visit with them. Get their input so that we know how we can proceed, and I think it helps to have everybody on board. So I'm wondering about a work session on the fourteenth. And they meet, what, does a park commission meet that evening?
Yes.
They have a
At seven.
Okay.
It's a regularly scheduled meeting.
And so maybe meeting after that, or
I'd rather meet before.
I was gonna say, I don't know how long their meetings last.
Yeah, because we could sit there forever waiting for their meeting to get done. I don't know.
Yeah. They can have them move their meeting up.
Huh?
They could move their meeting up.
Well, I mean, if we got there
Because if we, if they do it at seven, they'll be done at eight, we can get out of here till probably ten.
Right. I was thinking, how about we have our meeting at six?
Six?
Six with them. That's an hour.
I can
Pretty good.
I can certainly reach out to Amy Lannister, who's the Chair of the Park Commission, and and have that conversation with her and follow up with an email, as long as you all have it on your schedule for a week from tonight. And I can try to work out some logistics with with Amy.
At that earlier time, maybe it'd work for
Their meeting, their meeting is very big, so you know
No, yeah, I've already, I've talked with Amy about having it here in the auditorium. Then we would put together a an agenda for you all, and then obviously they have their agenda.
I won't be able to be there, but I mean
Do you have any questions or anything you want to submit, I mean?
Yeah, yeah. My understanding was there was a select people from Park Commission and from our council that were, and the citizens group that were working together, was am I mistaken already?
Well, there there was a, I invited Kevin Pearson out there from the board to meet with him. Nate Nirm from the Boone County Economic Group joined us, as well as Mike Hammond from the chamber. And then we were lucky enough to have Amy Lannister join us as well. And then Terry was out there as well, and we had some discussions. So what we focused on was you know, some of the questions that I received from the, well, does it have to be on the north end? They had concerns about that. They thought maybe the south. What we talked about is maybe we just have a conversation about is it plausible to put this in McColl's Park? And as, yes, and then as this, let's look ahead to March and the vote passes. Then we obviously would need to hire an architect and engineer. They could do a study as part of this to say, we think this is the best place to put it in McColl's Park. And then bring that back to the elected officials, the city council, the park commission, and those two groups together could decide where it goes. So would the location in the park? Again, speculation here right now, I know there's other listening probably on Zoom, so this is nothing that's definite. If I could just make that clear. Then the elected officials would decide after that and choose where it would go between the council and the park commission.
Okay, thanks for updating on that.
Sure. You're welcome.
Have it address some of the concerns that they had.
So the meeting Monday would be what then?
I think talk about their concerns, any concerns you have, and maybe if we could find a general consensus that, yeah, this makes sense to put it in the park in in McColl's Park. It's a fantastic park. It's one of the best in the state. How can we showcase that park, et cetera, with this wellness center there? And then let experts decide after reviewing the park. Well, this is where we feel that would best, that this would you know, the location would be. And then obviously, the final say is the elected folks.
Does it make sense to have somebody, when you said the experts, someone review, kind of look at the park and make that suggestion before we go to vote?
Well, again, until we have a vote, we don't have a project. And we, I know we keep getting
They would take that. We take money to to do that survey, too.
It would.
Yes. Yes.
I just always think
I think we
what you're voting on.
Oh, they passed a twenty-three million dollar school, and I didn't know what we were voting on.
That's up to the elected, elected.
Yeah.
Elected. I've suggested a way, if you want to change that, then you certainly have that project.
And to go to concept again, and that study would probably be in excess of fifty thousand. Because you're talking about having a civil engineer take a look at this. Their their concerns were with erosion and how that affects the ecological system in there, and that would that would require a study. And those aren't cheap.
Right, and we don't want to put that kind of money out before you you too far down the road.
You can't move forward without it. So until we have a project where we can apply for grants and and tap those funds, I I don't I mean, everybody has a concept, Linda, of how we're this, what this thing is going to look like, but it's differing opinions. And the last thing we want to do is get into the nuts and bolt bolts the weedy stuff again, like we did before. This, let's get the project
I mean, last
Ask the
Last time we had
Ask the Pass the project.
Yeah.
And then move forward from that point.
Last time we had, how many lanes are going to be in the pool? Where's where's the men's restroom going to be located? Where's the shower? Well, I.
We can't get there.
Yeah.
Well, and right, and remember, I'm sorry.
No, you have, go ahead.
And remember on the twenty-first in November, we have the citizens group at Ames EDC coming to make a presentation and give some. Uh more information.
And hopefully we'll have a couple of those representatives at this workshop so that they can listen and observe to what we're.
Right. And certainly I can reach out to that group.
Right, exactly right.
Right. No, I I think this is just a good first step to kind of those involved.
This is just more of an informational thing. So councils on the same page, parks departments on the same page.
The citizens.
The information, everybody can absorb it and make come to their own conclusions.
Right, no, I agree.
We have to, we have to come up with a consensus. So. Eventually.
I can be there. Six o'clock, you're gonna make that happen.
I'll try to make that. I will do my best to make that happen. Uh Amy sets those times, but I will certainly have a conversation with her.
Okay.
Which is information that you want to drop.
Yeah. Okay, any other council comments this evening? Um yeah, I had a couple of things. We light here. Um downtown truck or treat, great evening. A lot of people out there. I think I saw a wind out there too. Kids had a blast. Um. Halloween, probably the warmest Halloween that I can ever remember. So if we can schedule that again next year on the thirty-first of October, that'd be great. And then uh this morning at ten o'clock, uh there was ribbon cutting for the uh story walk, uh speaking McColl's down there. Pretty well attended by uh kids that got to do the story walk for the first test. And so they had a lot of fun. So. Yeah, the other council comments.
I will just second that that our the uh Thursday night Halloween session was a very big success for the city. I don't know where all the people came from, but it was very successful, I think. And I'm. As I kind of, I'm hoping next year, maybe the council can set up a table and and greet, meet people and. Uh at that same time, because a lot of people going through.
Okay, any public comments? Steven?